Good. Okay, we'll call this council meeting of February the 9th to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are conducting this business on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Let's stand for the singing of "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Guide, keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance. Does he has that, absent with regrets?
Motion to excuse Councilor Hesler.
Okay, thank you. Second by the deputy. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Any declarations of conflict of interest? You can declare at the time of the agenda item. Go ahead.
Worship, I'll be declaring conflict in item 10A and 11A. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Approval of agenda. Any additions or deletions? We actually do have a deletion. Go ahead, deputy.
Could we add African Heritage Month celebration?
That will be under... Gosh, it's long tonight. 15. African Heritage Month. Thank you. 15A. Anything else? We were going to delete... It's here somewhere. 12B. Waterfront advisory, only because we haven't gotten to that yet. So, we'll do that next week, deputy, and then get it on the very next agenda. So, we're going to remove 12B. Is there anything else for the agenda? Okay? A motion with the changes, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. So, it's presentation time. We love this. Look at this audience. So, first of all, you know, on behalf of council, we welcome all of you to this investiture ceremony for the Queen's Platinum Jubilee Medal. Thank you for joining us to honor the service and the dedication of Her Late Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and to recognize exceptional Nova Scotians who have undertaken works that emulate the example of our late Queen. Today, pay tribute to those who have given their time and talents in service to our communities, our province, and to our country. As you know, Nova Scotia's Platinum Jubilee Medal commemorates the 70th anniversary of Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II's ascension to the throne as Queen of Canada, and it serves as a tribute to her life of service. Her Majesty was crowned on June 2, 1952, during her coronation ceremony, which was held at Her Majesty's Westminster Abbey, as coronations have been for 900 years. Steeped in this rich history, Her Majesty's coronation made history as the first ever to be televised. I can just see all of our parents and grandparents watching that on television, in black and white, of course. And it was watched by tens of millions of people around the world. And so, with Her Majesty's lifetime of service, she dedicated more than 70 remarkable years of continuous service to Canada and countries throughout the Commonwealth. This extraordinary achievement made her our longest reigning and longest-lived monarch in modern history. Prior to her death at the beginning of the Platinum Jubilee Year, Her Late Majesty expressed a wish that jubilee events be an occasion for enjoying a sense of togetherness and optimism about the future, which makes today the perfect opportunity to celebrate the achievements of people who make our community better. We did a guy... I see lots of folks that were at the garden party as well, that we did with the Lieutenant Governor in honor of the Queen's 70th, and it was just in keeping with her desire to have that sense of togetherness. Today's medal recipients lead rather than wait to be led. They tackle challenges head-on. They see problems as opportunities instead of obstacles. So, from each of us at the Town of Yarmouth, congratulations to everyone receiving this very special honor. And we will now proceed with the presentation of the medals. So, I'm just going to come around here. Thank you. So, we have three. Three distinguished folks. They say I need a microphone. That's a first. Yes, by all means.
Your worship, I just wanted to point out that for anybody who's watching and maybe doesn't understand what is going on here as far as the selection of these individuals, these are individuals who work for the Town of Yarmouth in various capacities, and we had the opportunity to have some of our employees nominated for these awards based on service in the community, not in their job. So, this is where they go above and beyond, and as you've said, making our community a better place. And they've been recognized, they've been nominated by supervisors and managers within the town. And so, I just want to point that out for anybody watching, that these are proudly, these are our employees making a difference.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Christina Blake. Come on down. Christina has been volunteering for over 15 years around the community. Some of these events include Yarmouth Hospital Foundation, Sea Fest, Children's Wish, lots of Rotary events, and much, much more. The list is endless, because I know Christina, I think we all do at the table and in this community, and thank you for everything you do. The certificate, there's a lovely letter here from Government House, and the certificate says, "Christina Blake, by command of the Lieutenant Governor of the Province of Nova Scotia, the Queen Elizabeth II's Platinum Jubilee Medal is hereby conferred upon you in commemoration of the 70th anniversary of Her Majesty's ascension to the throne as Queen of Canada, and in recognition of your valuable contribution to the province." And it's signed by our Premier and Lieutenant Governor, Arthur J. LeBlanc. So, this is for you. Lots of papers flying around. This is for you, and then, there's a... You may have one of those, because we gave those out, and then, because I like to see. It's a beautiful... It's a beautiful medal. That's for you, too. Thank you so much. Next, we have Judy Durkey. And Judy's with her husband, Dave, and they've implemented and continue to operate a musical instrument library for the public, which loans out instruments to the public and donates instruments to those in need. And that is tremendously busy, isn't it? So, kids all... Well, I say kids, but it's... There's adults, too. There's adults, too, all over the community can just gather, you know, whatever they want, learn to use the instruments. I know David's a great guitar teacher, and I know that. I got the word. So, it's amazing work, and it just lifts everybody up. So, thank you on behalf of all of us. This is your certificate for the Queen's Jubilee and the letter, and then, your pin, and then, it's the same medal, but I have to show it, because it's just too nice. You can wear it to the office, too. Yeah. Gives you a little bit more clout. Congratulations, Judy. Okay. The third recipient is Todd Muse. Todd is a veteran, member of the Royal Canadian Legion, and the Operational Stress Injury Support, OSISS, representative on the branch executive. He organizes the Yarmouth OSI Support Group that meet every Monday, as well as various OSI awareness events. He's implemented the Town Memorial Banner Program and so much more. And I know the list goes on, Todd, and we know how big your heart is. So, thank you for everything you do. Absolutely amazing. So, the same thing, but they're each so special to Todd Muse. By command of Lieutenant Governor of the Province of Nova Scotia, your certificate and your pin. And it looks like you know what to do with these. Todd can wear his to work, too. Thanks to everybody that came out to support your family member and your friends. Linda, you... I see you there. You just got a medal as well. Congratulations from all of us. I know the work you do is wonderful in the community. So, thanks, everyone, for coming out. I don't want you to feel like you have to stay. Although, I can't believe there's a mass exodus from a council meeting.
Well, you go, Mayor, kicking everybody out.
I just want to say thank you to our two faithfuls. Oh, gosh. Okay, so, let's get back to this business. Approval of minutes, Town Council, January 12th, please. Counselor Bell, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, February 2nd. Counselor Heather, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Okay, public hearing. Accessory Buildings Land Use Bylaw Amendment. And the motion there is to approve a land use bylaw amendment to allow accessory buildings in front yards of residential zones. Okay? Need a seconder to get it on the floor, at least. Public hea... Oh, my goodness, look. Okay, so, that's what happens on a Thursday night. Okay, so, what I'll do is I'll ask at the public hearing, I'll ask three times if anybody would like to speak to this, and if you would like to share any thoughts, concerns, anything about either one of these issues. You come up on the first one, which is accessory buildings, state your name and where you live, and you can share with us, and then, it will be added later. It's added later in the agenda for us to make a decision. Okay? So, I'll ask three times. Would anybody like to speak to this one? Come right on out.
Is this already on? Sounds like it.
It is.
My name's Matthew Dairs. I'm at 26 Kai Crescent, the property in question. I appreciate being able to be back here. I hope, in discussion as these changes are being drafted, that this addresses the concerns that came up the first time this came around. I guess my advocacy would be that with the new rules, the accessory buildings in the front yard with the side yard component to it really makes them equivalent when you come, when you go around town to the types of buildings that have side yard accessory buildings that are in full view, corner lots, things like that. So, I'm hopeful it's seen that way. The other thing I would ask is I know three options were put forward in the original recommendations with this one being the primary one. If council doesn't find this acceptable, I would ask that those other options also be considered. So, I don't know what that process looks like. But I'm really hopeful that this does address those concerns. And I know, I think unanimously, council felt like what I had done, at least from a, like a look of the property, was acceptable. And I do hope that these changes would mean that anybody else looking to do something like what I was doing would have to conform to the types of rules that do make that a non-intrusive, non, you know, doesn't affect the look of the property or the street frontage look anymore than what property owners are able to do that have lots that allow them to use them like this. So, I guess that's all I have to say, unless there's any questions for me.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
It's a fun night to be out here.
Okay. So, I'll ask the second time, would anyone like to speak to this? And a third time, would anyone like to speak to this one? Okay. Hearing no one else, we'll move on to the next one, which is the Outdoor Lighting Land Use Amendment, Land Use Bylaw Amendment. To approve a land use bylaw amendment adding outdoor lighting provisions consistent with the recently adopted dark sky policy. Would anyone like to speak to this one? Okay. Would anyone like to speak to the dark sky issue? Would anyone like to speak to this one? Okay, hearing no one, we will move on to business arising. Okay, so, 11A, Accessory Buildings Land Use Bylaw Amendment, and this is where council discusses. So, the recommended motion there is that council approves second reading to a land use bylaw, LUB, amendment to allow accessory buildings in front yards of residential zones. Okay? Go ahead. Oh, I need a seconder. Okay. Counselor Cleveland?
I'd like to speak to it as well, just very quickly. This has been, the second time it's been through the Planning Committee. It comes from the Planning Committee originally. And the original, there was a lot of questions that came, and it ended up going back, and there were some questions that were asked. And one of the main ones, or main concerns, was that with these buildings being put in the front or being allowed to be in the front, how many buildings it actually, within the Town of Yarmouth, it actually affects if they were to take use of this? And the answer is five in total. So, it's a very minor thing. It's more directly effective for the person who moved this forward. I'm very pleased with the way the amendment is written, so I'm very happy to support it.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Hatfield.
Thank you. And I, Counselor Cleveland, I certainly appreciate all the work that the Planning Committee has put in into this, and Mr. Dairs as well. I still have issues with the amendment, and I'm not willing to support it as it is. And I just feel that we still don't have control over what could go up, even though it may only be six properties that you're, you know, we're saying, and we don't actually really know that. That was just a tabletop exercise done by the town planner at the time. And so, I'm just, I love what Mr. Dairs has put on his property. I have no issues with that. But I just don't know that we can always ensure that that's what's going to happen in the future at other, on other properties. So, that's a real... And one of these properties, potential properties, is actually located in the middle of two registered historic homes. So, that causes me a little bit of concern around that. So, like I said, as it is written, I still have problems with supporting it. I do appreciate what Mr. Dairs did say about looking at some of the other options that were put forward. I think there are, there is an option in there that I could live with, but it's not up to me, it's up to council, so.
What's your... I'll ask you what your option is that you're...
Well, this was the third option. I think that was...
Development agreement?
Yeah, the development agreement with Mr. Dairs himself.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. Anything else? You're good? Okay, anyone else? Counselor Hatfield, and then, deputy?
Oh, thank you, your worship. So, I'm supporting the motion primarily because I think that we reached consensus here that the, we have no issue whatsoever with the property, with what's been done on the property in question. And I'm satisfied that with the additional amendments that were made when it went back to the Planning Committee a second time, that we have significantly addressed issues of compliance, compliant properties. I think that the additional amendments have tightened the opportunities even more, and they also have ensured that whatever accessory building was going to be placed on the property, it would be not out in front, but back towards the back of, so inobtrusive. And so, for those reasons, I'm going to support the motion tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so, the compliance, the compliance and the aesthetics is, I'm just going to ask you this, because I heard what you said. I don't think anybody has an issue with what he's put up, but are you talking, because my concern is, it goes to everybody, because it's not about Mr. Dairs. It's about, it goes out to the whole town, number one. They said five, so that was a tabletop, like we don't know if it's five, or 15, or 20, doesn't matter. I mean, it's a few. Right? It's not, okay? And then, the other thing I wrote down was aesthetics, because you don't, is that what you were saying? Because that's what I was thinking when I had just written down aesthetics. Go ahead, if you want to just share with...
No, exactly. That's my concern, is how do we ensure that any future buildings that are put up, you know, these front yard buildings, that they are aesthetically pleasing, right? And that they are, that they do fit with the property as such. And I guess the one that is concerning is the one that is the building, that the property that is between two placked historic homes, and how does that impact, you know, those surrounding properties? And it may be that they'll never want to put one, a building on that property, but I just have to look at, you know, what if, right? And I look at the other alternatives that we have to just do a development agreement specifically for that property, and maybe that's, you know, a better resolution. So, I just throw that out.
Okay.
Now, we can turn this down and go some other direction if you wish to. But that's up to you, I guess.
Deputy, did you have a question? Are you good? Go ahead, C.A.O.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on process.
Thank you.
The public hearing that was advertised with regard to this application was for this proposal, and so, you don't have the latitude to choose a different option that was in the report, as it wasn't the recommended one. And so, if you were going to, if you were not satisfied to accept the recommendation from the PAC, the process reboots, right? With another look at remaining options. So, you know, the option that you have before you is what it is. And although there are other options that were presented, they were not, they were not what was advertised as for the public hearing. Is that clear?
Yeah, it is. So, if we vote for it, it's done. If we vote against it, we can still bring it back to the PAC for, no, do we have to bring it back to the PAC?
And we don't, he has to. The process begins again.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just a question. My recollection is that when we were first looking at this back in the fall, at the planning meeting, the question was asked about doing a development permit. And at the time, I believe the planner had some comments about how a development agreement would work, that I think my recollection was that we don't have the capacity within the municipal planning strategy right now to do that for accessory buildings, but, so I get, my question is, if we send it back, and if that's our intention, what kind of process will that involve in terms of the planning documents themselves? Can they accommodate this without having to go back and change the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaws to allow us to do development agreements for accessory buildings?
Go ahead, and then I have a question.
So, I don't remember that comment from the planner, but generally speaking, if the strategy does not allow you to do development agreements for this purpose, then you would have to amend the MPS and the LUB concurrently, right? So, it doesn't have to be a double process, but it's concurrent. But an MPS amendment has an extra step at the Planning Committee level with the public hearing at that level.
Okay, so, keep your mic on, because I have a question. So, can we, if we passed it as it is tonight, can we go back and do what I think is the easier thing that, and it's only, I think, it might only just be two of, I don't know what, I don't know where everybody is except for a couple, but for me, it's, we're happy with what Mr. Dairs has put up, and it's good, because, but this isn't about him. So, the next step to me would be, instead of, we could say yes tonight, and then go to, bring to PAC something that helps us ensure going forward that those aesthetics are looked after. We've done it before. Go ahead.
So, your worship, it is one of council's priorities to do a full MPS and land use bylaw review, and that is coming forward in the budget for next fiscal year to begin that process. So, this sounds like something that you're comfortable with for the case at hand, and you're worried about the future.
Yeah.
Well, you're going to have an opportunity and write this in your notebook, right?
Yes.
That this is an issue, the aesthetics of this, and this whole issue of accessory buildings.
Yeah.
Is something that you may want your consultant to take an extra hard look at in the MPS, so that it isn't, it isn't something that causes you so much concern about the future, that it's kind of clearly defined what it is you would find acceptable.
Okay. I mean, we don't, we don't want you to walk out of here because we're concerned about the future, right? Like, that's the struggle, and we're here to make, we're here to make the tough decisions, but we're sitting here saying, he's done something that we like, but it's not about that. It's about, right? So I, I mean, that's, I would probably, I think I could say yes to this. You okay with that too?
Yeah, I think it's something going forward.
Wade, we can bring that to P A C. Right?
Well, as, as Jeff said, I mean, we're redoing the entire.
Yeah.
It has to be brought up.
Oh, absolutely.
Right?
Yeah.
When we're, when we're restructuring.
Yeah.
The M P S goes, and that's going to be a lot.
Yeah.
You know, it's not tomorrow.
Yes. I don't, I don't think everybody's going to say, whoopee, I'm going to put a shin.
We're all talking about four or five places.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's, it's, it's.
The thing that bothers, there, there's something else that bothers me. Um, and again, all due respect, but we're putting a real fuss up about this, putting an accessory building in the front for four or five people. But if you were sticking in the back, you could stick anything you want there. And there are plenty of, of big lots on a corner, mine being one of them. That you can certainly clearly see my building. You know, it seems hypocritical to me that we're putting as much of a fuss up about it as we are. Just my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So we're going to vote on this one and the motion is that council approves second reading to land use bylaw amendment to allow accessory buildings in front yards of residential zones. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Good.
Your worship, just, uh, so my understanding, and Greg can correct me if I'm wrong. So the process from here is that it gets advertised, there's an appeal period or does it not get advertised? Uh, can you clarify the, the process from here?
Amendment or you answer the land use bylaw.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll clarify that with the planning office, but, uh, yeah, so it, it would have to be advertised before it is, is law.
Okay. Good.
But you're good, yours is there.
Okay. Outdoor lighting, the, and the recommended motion there is, good night, thank you. That council approves second reading to the land use bylaw amendments adding outdoor lighting provisions consistent with the recently adopted dark sky policy. Second by counselor Bell. Any discussion on this one? Counselor Dairs?
Yeah, just very quickly for the public's, um, information so that people don't misconstrue the meaning. It's, it's for new developments or major redevelopment of, uh, commercial buildings. So it's not going to apply to residential and it's certainly not going to apply to anybody that's just doing a, uh, an upgrade on their home.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Strategic priorities update. C A O.
Thank you, worship. So we discussed the strategic priorities at the committee of the whole meeting and there's a rather messy looking, uh, chart attached to the agenda. So anything that's been struck out has been, has been either completed or changed. Uh, and if it's been changed, the, uh, the new wording is in red. So your, your top priority item or your number one priority item, uh, on the top part of strategic priorities chart is the Mariner Center expansion agreement. And that, that, uh, should be completed, if not by the end of this month, certainly in March. Uh, we're suggesting that that one, um, that is a new one and we suggested that that one come up from below, um, as it's, as it's imminent and, uh, we had, uh, struck out the international ferry committee because the ferry issue we were concerned with back in the fall seems to have been resolved for now. Uh, the waterfront advisory committee, we had a task to get a terms of reference done, which we did so that the upcoming, uh, recommended priority is to have that first meeting, uh, next month. And of course we need members to, to have the meeting, so we'll see, we'll see how we make out there. Um, the municipal planning strategy work, uh, we do have a work plan. Uh, what we need now is budget approval and so there is a submission within the operating budget that Jerry has and that you will see, uh, in the, in the weeks ahead. So that is kind of the next step is to get a budget and then that work can commence. Uh, we're anticipating budget approval in May. That's usually the month that we get the operating budget approved. The community grant process review, council agreed to defer, uh, that for a year and run the grant process under our new policy for a year and then review. Uh, in its place, uh, we've put waterfront plan review because once we get the waterfront advisory committee, uh, stood up, then first order of business should be to take a look at the existing plan and determine the way forward. Uh, the housing assessment, uh, terms of reference, we discussed that, uh, ever so briefly at committee of the whole and determined that what we actually needed was a meeting on its own to discuss that. And so that meeting will be scheduled, uh, sometime, uh, certainly by the end of March. Okay? So that priority chart, uh, your worship will appear on every agenda as a information item and every three months, uh, we'll be reviewing it and, and updating it. So, um, that is, that is for your information. And again, we suggested, uh, staff are suggesting those five at the top, uh, considering the ones, uh, in the, in the list below and, and kind of the timeframe. So if you're okay with that, uh, maybe just a motion to accept the updated chart.
Sure. Good. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. We are at, I am so much better with paper, but I can't kill any trees. Council advisory committees. So that's you there, deputy? Go ahead.
Recommended motion that council send a thank you letter to Oliver Gaskin on his many years of service for, as a volunteer firefighter.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to do a jurisdictional scan of other licenses bylaws.
Second by counselor Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to set up a separate meeting to discuss housing needs assessments.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council send a letter to the coldest night of the year advising of the grants process.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council send a letter to Mile East Productions congratulating them on their event.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just for the record, was this not a yasta event?
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Go ahead, counselor Bell.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, um, I've had some time to think about this over the last week and, uh, I think in the moment I was, I was thinking that we were sending a letter thanking volunteers, uh, not necessarily the, actually the, the company. And the question that I have is what kind of precedent does it send? Um, does it set for council to, uh, be endorsing commercial businesses? So, uh, I'm just not, I, I guess I'm, I'm asking for direction as to whether or not it's a normal process because I'm thinking in terms of what would I do if I were a commercial business and I, and I got a letter of endorsement from a body like the municipal count, like a town council? I probably would, would be, be using that for my marketing and for my promotion when I'm going out looking for future. It's almost like a seal of approval. And, uh, and I'm just, I'm not sure if that's, would we normally do that? So I guess the question I'm asking is, is this an extraordinary thing that we're doing or do we send letters of congratulations to businesses all the time? Thank you.
I don't think we do.
They're in, in an unusual industry, right? Um, and I don't know that we've had a, a business in that industry in the past. It's, um, you know, we have certainly, um, members of council have, uh, endorsed or congratulated businesses on social media. Um, you know, I, it is unusual. I don't know that we need to worry too much about it, to be honest. Um, they, they did a good job. They did their business, uh, so to speak, and, uh, and the community as a whole benefited. So I, I don't see anything wrong with acknowledging that. Yeah. And as I say, counselors individually have certainly congratulated businesses on milestones or achievements in social media, uh, without, uh, second thought really.
But we don't, we don't always send out letters, you know what I mean? Like as a council. So that's right. There's, he's right. We do individually, but. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if it would be possible to amend the motion to include volunteers, the volunteers in, in the, in the wording of, uh, that we send a letter commending the volunteers and the, and the company on, because I would assume it was the company's responsibility to, to, um, court, you know, to, to organize all the volunteers and, and pull them in and get them energized and give them, you know, I, I, I'm assuming that that would have been part of their job. So I, I don't know. I just, I just would really like to see the volunteers, uh, and the community recognized in the letter. So I, I don't know if that's necessary as an amendment to the motion, but.
Well, it is an amendment. So if you want to make that amendment, you would.
Well, I, I would actually like to make that as, as a motion then to amend the letter, to amend the motion to include volunteers in the letter of congratulations.
Okay. Do I have a seconder? Okay. So what's going to happen is we're going to have a discussion on that one and then we'll vote on, on whether we want to add that and then we'll vote on the first motion. What's that? The entire motion? Yes. As, as new. Okay? So is there any discussion on that addition of volunteers? Okay. So we're going to vote on that? Oh, sorry. I don't know how I'm to say.
Yeah, just to say that a big part of what Mile East did was, um, mobilized 160 volunteers who performed more than 2,500 hours of volunteer time. And certainly Mile East Productions, uh, did hold a volunteer appreciation night, uh, where they took everybody to, um, Boston Pete's, I believe, and, and had snacks and things. So they did recognize the volunteers, but I'm, I'm certainly, uh, happy to include the volunteers in, in the recognition. Absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Okay. And then the amended motion. Deputy, you want me to do this one?
Sure.
Okay. The amended motion would be that council send a letter to Mile East Production. Go ahead, Jeff. You're going to help me with this one.
I would say, your worship, uh, the motion would look something like the council send a letter to Mile East Production congratulating them and their volunteers on the event.
That, that speak to what you're after? Okay. Okay. Sounds good. All right. Can I have a seconder? No, it's a, now it's a new motion.
Nope.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Recommended.
Go ahead, deputy. Sorry.
Recommended, a recommended motion that council amend the noise bylaw is recommended by staff.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council adopt the policy and bylaw review policy as presented.
Seconded by counselor Bell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
A recommended motion that council approve amendments to section 12.0 provisions regarding the waterfront advisory committee and the citizens advisory committee's policy is recommended by staff.
Okay. Seconded by counselor Bell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Recommended motion, as of June 9th, 2023 marks the 100th anniversary of the unveiling of the Yarmouth Senatath, which honors Yarmouth, Yarmouth County's war dead, that Yarmouth Town Council support the establishment of a committee to commemorate the anniversary.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
And that council nominate counselor Bell Hatfield to serve on that, that committee.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Any discussion? Sorry. Anybody want that position?
It's all hers.
Go ahead there, deputy.
Recommended motion that council appoint Mayor Moon and deputy mayor Steve Berry to the waterfront advisory committee.
Seconded. Any discussion? Good thing we, good thing we didn't do our work this week. We weren't even on the committee officially. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
A recommended motion that council send a letter to the Fidelis House Society advising them of the grants process.
Seconded by counselor Heather. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council support the Yarmouth International Airport request of $5,700 from the 2023-24 budget for their phase one project submission to the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund.
Second. Any discussion? We, we had talked about this before because the importance of making sure that they knew the funds were, were there, right? So you, they know that's coming, right? Okay. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council send a letter to the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation advising them of the grants process.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Oh, sure.
Um, seeing that these are popping up on the agenda individually, I wonder if we should consider in the future making a motion that staff handle these?
We talked about that. Yeah. I think we, we talked, we talked about that and we decided that we needed to see them. We needed to see them.
Okay.
As a council?
Yep.
Yeah. But, yeah, that's right. I was going to say, but you can still, yeah, you can't, not until we see them. Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. Yeah. Exactly. And that was a, a really brave move by council. Go ahead, counselor Hatfield.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, I just wanted to, um, to point out because the radiothon is coming up, I think the end of February, first, first March.
Second of March.
Um, uh, that, um, the council is supporting the hospital foundation in a variety of ways. The hospital foundation is one of the primary, um, partners in the patient navigator program. And we, uh, agree to a 20% increase in funding for that program at our December meeting. Um, and, uh, and we're all partners in that. The hospital foundation is, is a big, big supporter of that, uh, program and hopefully, um, our contributions help to support, uh, that, which is administered by the Chamber of Commerce, obviously, but, but, um, we're all partners in that process. And I guess what I wanted to point out is that though we are over budget this year, um, for our grants, uh, options, and if we're being fiscally responsible, which we're trying to be, I think, um, there's just, there's not any more money in the 2022, 2023 grants budget, but that doesn't stop individuals from, um, contributing to the radiothon. And I know that I for one will continue to. will continue to contribute as I have in the past, and I would just like to use the opportunity, I guess, to encourage, you know, my fellow councillors all through the tri-counties to think about the people in their lives that have been affected by the hospital, by, by services that are provided in health, and, and maybe make a contribution as they are able that reflects the care that they've been given by an individual or someone. For me, it's Dr. Ummish Prabhu, who has cared for me longer than any other person in healthcare, and, and so every year I like to acknowledge what it means to me to have the constancy of that care over the last, I think it was July the 23rd, 1993. Most people remember wedding anniversaries, and I remember the day that I first met Dr. Prabhu, and it's very important to me, and, and I'm sure that everyone in the tri-counties has some moment in their life where healthcare has impacted them. So just, just an encouragement as they're able to, to contribute. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to investigate QR codes for historical sites, buildings, homes, and trees within the town of Yarmouth is recommended in the 2022 Community in Bloom evaluation.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thank you. Okay, citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, that's you councillor Cleveland.
We have nothing, your worship.
Okay, thank you. And deer management strategy, councillor Dairs, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to provide counsel and, and the public, I suppose, with a, a quick update. The deer management committee has been meeting on a fairly regular basis. We've formed a subcommittee to investigate all options available to us, including the pros and cons and all, any estimated costs, and we expect that probably within the next six weeks, we'll be able to present those options to the, or those recommendations to the, the deer management strategy group. In the meantime, we've discussed whether or not it would be helpful to have some signage, and the signage would include two different types. One would be just the, the deer profile on a yellow background like the highway has, and have those strategically placed in hotspots in town, just as a visual reminder to, to motorists that there are deer in the area. For example, Upper Parade Street, for example, which is, you know, very common to see deer in that area. So we thought that that might be one way of just, I guess, getting the message out that there's deer around and you should be careful. And also some strategically placed signs, much like the ones that were created for the Lake Milo area, don't feed the ducks, and if you do feed the ducks, this is what you feed them, only this one would say, don't feed the deer, and this is why. And our communications expert has kindly accepted that challenge. So we'd like to move on that and get some signs. Of course, the, the committee doesn't have a budget for that, so I'm just making those recommendations. At this point, data collection is going to be vital, that's made, been made perfectly clear to us by the Department of Natural Resources and Renewables. We have to first establish a method of determining the size of the urban herd, and one of the, one of the possible ways of doing that, or to augment other methods, would be to place some game cameras at locations throughout town, and once again, there's going to be a cost associated to that if it gets to that point. You might see a public, you should see a public survey come out very soon, we've, we've gone over a couple of drafts, I think Lindsay was pulling together the final version, and we'll get that out both in a paper form and online. We've been doing lots of research to determine what other communities in Nova Scotia, Canada, and North America have been doing, and also trying to track their success. And sometime in the future, we think that it might be also helpful to have an information brochure. The Communities in Bloom members have agreed to provide a list of, and I hesitate to say it, but deer resistant plants, because it doesn't seem like anything is deer proof. But that's something that, that they said they would provide, and I already got one email with a list of probably about 20 or 25, I was surprised that the list was as long as it was. But I want you to know, this is not an issue that will be resolved quickly. By comparison, the mayor of Churro wrote to the Department of Natural Resources and Renewables in 2014, and it was almost seven years later before they actually employed a, a strategy to reduce the population. So we know that we've got a lot of data collection to do, department has made it perfectly clear that any, any physical interaction with the animals, other than maybe putting up deterrents like noise makers, or lights, motion lights, or those types of, of efforts, fencing, those kind of things, but any actual physical contact with the animals would only be with their approval. So we've got to collect the data, we've got to provide it, it's not something that's going to be done in the next 12 months, probably. But that's where we're at, thank you.
Do you have, do you have provincial people on your committee?
Yes, we do, we have a biologist, we have an enforcement officer, who's the resource people. We just had a presentation at the last meeting from the gentleman Noda Kentville, who's, I believe, one of the supervisors of the Western Region. Though, yeah, we've got lots of support from them, but they're just laying out the facts to us, this is what you need to do before we, we make decisions on your behalf. And to be honest, you know, the last meeting, they repeatedly referred back to the pellet count as a means of establishing the population, and for the life of me, I don't know how that's going to work in, inside town limits, I honestly don't. So I think we have to look at a couple of the other methods. One is just do a, a planned and consistent route, so you drive a certain route, and you do that consistently at the same time of day, perhaps, or the same day of the week, and you, you map and count where the deer are seen. I can tell you that I've been doing that myself, and there are very few areas in town where you don't see deer. In fact, in one particular night, which was extremely, I don't know whether it was the weather conditions or just the time of night, but I saw deer in, in 22 different locations in the town of Yarmouth. So they're, they're everywhere. But that may be one method, and if we augment that, as I said, with maybe game cameras to put them in, in areas where we know the deer may be traveling. One of the issues, of course, is that a lot of these deer, through the daylight hours, don't take up residence in town, they, they migrate into town at night. So that, that's probably true in the areas that are on the outskirts, such as the hospital, Prospect Street, the golf course, those places, I think those deer actually come into town at night, so it's going to be a management problem. And, and honestly, I saw a picture just this week of a home in Dayton that had 16 deer in their backyard in the middle of the day, and I've actually seen more than 20 in a field just in Lakeside, just outside of town, a couple of kilometers. So they're everywhere. They, they said that one of the best methods of controlling the population is several consecutive harsh winters. Good luck with that.
Banana belt.
Yeah, our winter was on Saturday.
I'm, exactly, exactly. I'm still trying to get past the pellet, and I get it, I get it, I just, I can't, I can't...
Personally, I've dismissed that as an option, but, you know, it's been, I just don't see how it works, you know?
This is, there's, there's no common sense in this, but thank you for the, and all the work you're doing. Mike, are you going to put, yeah? Oh. Can we turn our lights off, just for a second?
Yeah, just that I did mention the subcommittee, and the subcommittee actually is, for the most part, is three of us, councillor Cleveland, myself, and, and Rachel Fells, supporting Anne de Grosbois, who is doing a, a yeoman's service to the town. She's just, yeah, she's incredible.
Awesome, thank you. Now, who was, okay, go ahead, Bell, councillor Bell.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you to the committee for the work that you're doing on this, and thank you to Anne, she's just a, you know, fireball. Question, I'm assuming by pellets you're talking about stool? Stool samples, or, you know, is that what they're, they're asking for? Yeah, okay. So would there be a possibility of engaging homeowners in that process, and, or is that not, or would they not accept the evidence, the evidentiary from individual homeowners? Because I have, I can help.
When the province was here, it's been a couple of years ago, I said, how, how do we tell fresh stool from old stool? But it's, it's just story. It's a night.
So, so actually, I think a more accurate, I guess a more accurate way of determining how many deer is I looked out my window at supper time, two nights ago, when there were 12 deer in my backyard, and last night, again, there were 12, and tonight, I think I only saw eight, but I was only just walking passing by the window. I don't think I have to count the stool. I think if I look out my window and see 12 deer, and I take a picture of those 12 deer, that's pretty much evidence that there's 12 deer in my backyard. So I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, anecdotal evidence we have to be careful of, because some people have a tendency to exaggerate, but I think it's, it's, every bit is valid and, if not more valid than any type of pellet count that might be undertaken. But the pellet count works in the rural setting where they, and the way this works is they, they cut a straight line through the, through the woods, and they look at a two-meter-wide swath, and they count how many pellets they find in that two-meter swath, and then they extrapolate that and come up with a number. You, you try to walk somewhere in a straight line of town. Thank you.
Councillor Cleveland?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of funny, there's a stubbornness there with the way things are done, that I, I do, I have, I think we're going to have issues with that, but it's a matter of discussing and maybe working things out. I did want to throw one other thing, and your councillor Dairs was mentioning the, the subcommittee that we're serving on. I have a meeting tomorrow, actually, at 1:30, with a biologist from the University of Dalhousie, who specializes in contraceptives with wildlife and with Mytax at the same time, and they're a group that does research, and what they'll do, it's government sponsored, we'll have to figure out how to pull all this off, but what they do is they'll hire students, graduate students, who are, who are working to help you in your research and pay half the cost. And so there might be ways that we can, can make some things happen, and perhaps, you know, it's, it's a kind of a dream of mine that we could, we could have some kind of a pilot project here to, to perhaps deal with, with contraceptives and, and sterilization processes and things like that. They've done it on the West Coast, and I don't believe it's been done on the East Coast yet, and wouldn't it be great if, if Yarmouth could be a part of that?
Thank you. Good.
Your worship.
Yes.
I think there was a motion to be made there to request staff to erect deer warning signs, and perhaps signs to educate on not feeding deer.
So can this, that's what I was starting to ask our communications. Mike, you're going to put a, we're going to put a fine, we're going to put the fine on that? Okay, okay. I, I mean, just my opinion, we need to, money talks. If you get caught feeding the deer, this is, you're getting the fine. Sometimes that's the only, it's the only thing that makes sense to some people. So, okay, so the motion was to, how many signs do you want?
I would leave that to public works.
Okay. Okay. So the motion is to direct staff to erect deer crossing signs? What? Deer warning signs? Deer crossing, yeah, deer warning.
They cross on the sidewalks.
Yeah, well, you know what? I'd tell you how to get them off the street, get them for jaywalking, chuck them in jail. The jails would be full.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. I, I didn't make it, you want to make the motion? I don't make motions from the seat. No? Oh, okay, gilded, and you seconded it.
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Questions for committee chairs, anyone? Anything you wanted to ask? I did, I'll throw something in here, for those, I, I think we're aware of it, because it's been on, on social media, and it'll, it'll, it's been in the news today as well, but City Drug Store was just designated to CPPCC, it's hard to say, but, the Community Pharmacy Primary Care Clinic, so one of 12 in the entire province, and I understand there's 300 pharmacies in all of Nova Scotia, they were one of 12. So what happens is, and I did go over this morning, we did the little tour, and when you first walk into City Drug, you know how the new sliding doors are there, they've redone the whole thing, you walk in, to your left, there's a clinic there, and then you, then you go through another set of doors, and it's the, the pharmacy, and they're, they dispense there. So clinic here, dispensary, and they're working on the other side, so they've kind of flipped things around. So in, in a nutshell, they are, pharmacies are, pharmacists are taking on some of the healthcare issues. So prescription renewals of medications, birth control, uncomplicated bladder infections, mental health services, chronic disease management, immunizations and injections, strep throat, minor ailments like, like heartburn, allergies, cold sores, things like that, and there's, there's a, a longer list than that, that they will take on. So, yeah, so folks can, can drop in there, or give them a call and, and see how that works, but all of these things are taking pressure off the healthcare system, which is tremendously helpful, and then we've had the clinics that the, the health department puts on, so they've, they've been down there in the, what's, which one is that? Harbour South, I almost called it Ocean, yeah, Harbour South, I get them mixed up, in Harbour South, and people have been taking advantage of those as well, we need to use the, you have to use them, so they're pretty pumped about that, so it's not solving big problems, and, but every little bit helps, and of course Rebecca's on the job with, with just, you know, the whole doctor recruitment thing, unbelievable. Go ahead councillor Bell.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring to your attention that the, the Navigator Initiative, the Chamber Initiative, they applied in December for the new Health Services Grant Program, and, and I just saw the announcement yesterday, I think it's, is it $67,000? Something around, it's, yeah, so, so that will be their proposal, you know, they put the proposal in to provide, I think, support for family medicine practice, Heather, can you speak to it?
Retention of physicians that we have, and that was, that was, the whole proposal was based around that, so, yeah, and we got funding for, for the year, and I think it is, they expect it to be, you know, to be able to reapply and have it continue, so.
Good. Perfect. Okay, anything else, anyone? All right, date, approval of invoices? Councillors Bell and councillor Dairs? Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, and then we have one addition, deputy mayor.
So at last meeting, we approved funding for an African Heritage Month celebration, and I'm happy to say on February 22 at 6:00 PM at the YCMHS Cafeteria, we'll be partnering with Troy County Centre for Education, and we're going to have a community event, that anyone can come up. We hope to have a few guest speakers, some light refreshments, some students involved. So, yeah, just mark your calendar for that, and once again, thank you for, council for always being supportive of those kind of endeavors.
Thank you. I'm out of town, three days that week, you got her. Okay?
Debbie, could you send me an email?
Yeah, good stuff. Okay, and we did put the flag up yesterday morning, Tuesday, go ahead.
Yes, the students from YES come down with their student support worker and their reading mentor, and a few councillors joined, and we went outside on a nice warm day and raised the flag, so it's something that they really look forward to. In the past, we've gave certificates to them and whatnot, and I just think the ability to... to include our youth with these things as much as we can is great. So it was a great day, great feedback from my coworkers, and the kids were really proud to feel important for a day and come down and raise it, so thanks once again.
There was one young man there, this high, and he says, I don't smile much, but boy, you was smiling yesterday, did you hear him, Bell? Yeah. She said, you don't smile much, and he was trying, he was trying not to smile, but it does it, it brings out the best in them, it's a big deal. Okay, date of next meeting is March the 9th, and let's have a motion to go in camera. Okay?